Tonight, invocation, we're pleased to have the Reverend Ashley Uridy from All Saints Episcopal. Hello, how are you? If we can all please rise.
Let us pray. Holy Creator Redeemer Sanctifier, we ask your blessing upon this place and all those gathered within it. Fill us each with your discerning spirit. Soften our hearts and move through our words and actions, that all that is said and done here will bring goodness and light to all corners of your creation under the guidance of tonight's leadership. This we earnestly pray. Amen.
Thank you. And if now we all may offer a moment of silence for all the heroes that have given their lives to our great country and safety. And thank you, and now the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, do we have the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, all present, excluding Councilmember Rouse, who's out of town.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have a motion for decertification of the closed session?
So moved.
Alrighty.
Just one second, please. The vote is open. By a vote of ten to zero, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with a motion to recess.
And if we can move on to the approval of the minutes of the informal and formal sessions of February 21st, 2023. Do I have a motion? Alrighty.
The vote is open. By a vote of nine to zero, with Councilmember Holcomb abstaining, you've approved the minutes as submitted. I'm sorry, eight to zero, Councilmember Volucci also abstained, I apologize.
Okay, thank you very much. It's my pleasure now for the mayor's presentations. And the first one is to honor via resolution the Virginia Beach Wesleyan University Women's Soccer Team. Why don't you come on up here, you know, right in front of the dais? And it's with pleasure, we let Council Lady Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond will read the proclamation. Yep. Come on. Welcome, everybody, and congrats. Okay.
You look beautiful on camera. We look beautiful that age, too.
Yes, look at, you should see yourself.
Yeah, back in 1960.
Whereas this body hereby recognizes Virginia Wesleyan University Women's Soccer for making it to the final four of the NCAA Division III National Tournament for the second time in program history, and congratulates these students athletes for this notable athletic achievement. And whereas the Virginia Wesleyan University's Women's Soccer Team finished their 2022 season with a record of eighteen and three and four, ranking fourth in the nation. And whereas the Virginia Wesleyan University's Women's Soccer averaged more shots on goal, more shots per game, and more goals per game compared to their opponents. And whereas defender Sam Crawford earned the All Dominion Athletic Conference Defensive Player of the Year, All South Atlantic Region Four First Team, All Dominion Athletic Conference Player of the Year, All Dominion Athletic Conference Tournament Most Outstanding Player, First Team All-State Honors, Second Team All-Region Honors, and First Team All-Conference Honors. And whereas goalkeeper Rachel Quickly was named to the First Team All-Region, All Dominion Athletic Conference All-Conference Team Player, All Dominion Athletic Conference All-Tournament Team, she was selected as a Third Team All-American Player by the United Soccer Coaches, and Quickly set a new record of 918 for the best save percentage in school history. And whereas forward Cheyenne Diaz earned the titles of All-South Atlantic Region Fourth Player Third Team and All-Dominion Athletic Conference Rookie of the Year. And whereas Molly Gobble, Kathleen Doswell, Alexis Miller, Kailin Bird, and Lexi Sotario each earned All-Dominion Athletic Conference All-Conference Awards. And whereas Lexi Sotario and Alexis Miller earned spots on the NCAA All-Tournament Team. And whereas head coach Jeffrey Bowes earned his 300th career win during the regular season, making coach Bowes the 19th winningest coach in the NCAA Division III history. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the members of City Council, both individually and collectively, hereby commend the Virginia Wesleyan University Women's Soccer Team for their commitment and efforts on and off the pitch, and congratulate each member of the team, head coach Jeffrey Bowes, and the entire Wesleyan community. Congratulations, and go Marlins! This was adopted by the City Council of the City of Virginia Beach the seventh day of March 2023. And we present this resolution duly signed by each member of the Virginia City Council. And we would like to recognize the President, Dr. Scott Miller.
Come on up.
And I'm not done yet.
Okay.
I'm gonna ask a fellow Marlin from your, to come down with me, I have something for each one. Can you help me, Chris?
Yes, ma'am. Real quick, Mr. Mayor, while they walk down, if I may. Ladies, we have the Director of Parks and Recs here, Mr. Kersman. He's always looking for volunteers to help out at any one of the rec centers or soccer fields. So back there he is, and he'll be glad to have your help.
She left out that Councilmember Taylor is a member of the class of 2006. And Jennifer, who is not here, is class of 2008.
You have to be proud.
Extremely. And as the City of Virginia Beach celebrates 60 years, we're proud to celebrate that we're the only college or university to be here all 60 years. We are the only NCAA college or university claiming Virginia Beach as our home, and we're extremely proud of that. We're the only college or university to bring home five NCAA national championships, 13 Final Fours, 15 Elite Eights, and 19 Sweet 16 finishes to our home here in Virginia Beach. So continuing this tradition, we're here today to recognize the Women's Soccer Team who advanced to the NCAA National Championships. And we are proud to be members of the Virginia Beach community and to claim this as our home. So I thank you.
And we're proud to have you here. Thank you, and God bless. All right, thank you. And congratulations again. It takes a lot of hard work to do what you do. Hey, God bless all of you. Okay, do we have anybody from the purchasing department here? Welcome. Oh, thank you all for being here. Whereas the public purchasing profession plays a critical role in the efficacy of both government and business, purchasing professionals make important contributions to assure the resourceful use of taxpayer dollars by providing efficient, effective service while maintaining the highest standards. Whereas local, state, and federal purchasing professionals are responsible for maintaining and monitoring billions of dollars worth of goods and services every year, directly influencing national and international economics. Whereas the City of Virginia Beach Purchasing Department plays a significant role in high caliber quality, efficiency, and effectiveness, as well as strategic logistical operational support to all departments in the City of Virginia Beach. And in addition to the purchase of goods and services, the Purchasing Division engages in or has direct responsibility for functions that include executing contracts, developing procurement strategies, assisting the SWAM Business Office in achieving the aspirational goals of minority, woman, and service-disabled veterans, own-business participation in city contracts, developing working relationships with departments in the organization. And whereas the Purchasing Division of the City of Virginia Beach recognized, supports, and practices the public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service, and transparency established by the NIGP, the Institute of Public Procurement, as fundamental tenets of public purchasing profession. Whereas the City of Virginia Beach Purchasing Division has received numerous accreditation awards, Achievement for Excellence Awards from the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing, the National Procurement Institute, and the Universal Public Procurement Certification Council. And whereas the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing has proclaimed the month of March as National Procurement Month to further expand the awarenesses of the roles of the purchasing professionals to government officials, general public, businesses, and corporate leaders. Therefore, I, Robert M. Bobby Dyer, Mayor of Virginia Beach, do hereby proclaim March 2023 Public Procurement Month in Virginia Beach, and I call upon all citizens and members within the government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and in Virginia Beach to recognize the achievements of the purchasing department have made us as we honor Public Procurement Month. Folks, we can't run a city without you. Okay. I gotta get a stairway in the middle of the dais, though. Folks, it is indeed an honor that I present you with this. Thank you all, and God bless you. Would somebody like to speak? Please. You've been drafted.
Well, thank you, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, and members of City Council. It's an honor to serve and to be serving the City of Virginia Beach and all of its citizens. My staff here and my director, of course, we are again honored, and we love our jobs, and we will do everything we can do to make sure that the City of Virginia Beach continues to get good quality service and products. Thank you.
Thank you all. All right. Okay, moving right along, and thank you all very much. We have the public hearings on the CAFE franchise agreements. Do we have any speakers?
We had one speaker signed up, Barbara Massner, but I did not see her here. So no additional speakers.
No other speakers?
No other speakers.
Okay. Lease of city property at a public hearing on the Dolphin Run Condom and the Association Incorporated for a lease of property approximately 0.09 acres at Third Street and Atlantic.
Again, the only one signed up was Ms. Massner, and I do not see her. So no speakers.
Okay. At this point, I will read the script for the speakers. I want to remind everyone the City Council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of...
Mayor, I'm sorry, we have one additional public hearing.
Oh, okay. Oh, my apologies.
Thank you.
Declaration of sale of excess property, 10 feet utilities men at 3500 Dam Neck Road and Loomis Networks Incorporated DBA Segra install and maintain underground fiber optics facilities.
Again, we only had one speaker signed up. I don't see her in the audience, so no speakers.
Okay, and that concludes the, you know, the public hearings. I will want to remind everyone that the City Council speaker policy that allows certain groups or representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have up to three minutes to speak on any single item. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by the council at the time you are called. For items placed on the consent agenda, a speaker will have up to three minutes to address any single item. If a speaker wishes to address multiple consent agenda items, the speaker will have a cumulative total of six minutes to address those items. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of items that they have signed up to address. And finally, I call upon all speakers in the chamber to be civil in their discussion. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the City Council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this are all of us to strive for civility and respect. Okay, do we have any one-item speakers?
Again, Barbara Massner has signed up on every item. I don't see her in the audience, so no, no speaker, sir.
Okay, and then, Madam Vice Mayor, if we can proceed with the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under K ordinances and resolutions, number one is ordinance to appropriate $75,000 from the Tourism Investment Program TIP fund balance to the FY 2022/23 Non-Departmental Operating Budget regarding a grant to the Virginia Museum of Contemporary for the Art Boardwalk Art Show, requested by Mayor Dyer, Councilmembers Volucci and Remick, with Ms. Henley voting no on that item. Number two, the ordinance to appropriate $35,000 from the Tourism Investment Program TIP fund balance to the FY 2022/23 Non-Departmental Operating Budget rate grant to the Coast Defense Study Group, Inc. for relocation of the USS Iowa Battleship Barrel to Cape Henry, JEB Fort Story, requested by Vice Mayor Wilson and Councilmembers Remick and Taylor, with Ms. Henley voting no. Number three, ordinance to declare 2,529 square feet of city property at 2640 Highland Meadows Way to be in excess of the city's needs and authorize the city manager to exchange some to James and Wanda Cooper. Number four, ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a lease for city-owned property for up to five years to Virginia Beach Farmers Market Building III, space 14, regard Gillies Cranberry LLC. Number six is the ordinance to accept a donation in installation of playground equipment with value of $60,337.94 from the Pembroke Meadows Civic League Ray Pembroke Meadows Lake Park. Number seven, ordinance to transfer $300,000 of general fund vacancy savings to the FY 2022/23 Planning Department operating budget for a work associated with the update of the comprehensive plan.
Open a public hearing on planning.
Number one, Tony Sadie and Lena Sadie, Tony and Lena Azar Sadie, trustees of Tony and Lena Sadie Revocable Living Trust and 5020 Atlas Group LLC for variance section four of the subdivision regulations regarding the subdivide two lots at 5020 Lord Felton Lane and parcel directly west of 5020 Lord Felton Lane, District 9. Number two, Rudolph Development General Booth LLC and Atlow Group, Inc., Rudolph Development General Booth LLC for modification of proffers for conditional change of zoning and conditional use permit regarding indoor recreation facility at property directly east of 1700 General Booth Boulevard and north of Edison Road, District 5. Number three, 1900 Virginia Beach Boulevard LP for conditional change of zoning from A12 Apartment District to conditional B2 Community Business District and conditional use permit regarding the bulk storage yard in 1900, 1902, 1904, 1906, and 1912 Virginia Beach Boulevard, 303, 305, 307, 309, 311, 313, and 315 Maxi Drive, District 6. Number four, SXCW Properties 2 LLC, Victor Alpha Associates LLC for conditional use permit, Ray Car Wash Facility and Automobile Service Station at 5480 Virginia Beach Boulevard, District 4. Number five, VB BTS 2 LLC, Virginia Electric and Power Company, ADB, I mean DBA, excuse me, Dominion Energy Virginia for conditional use permit regarding communication tower at 568 North Lynn Haven Road, District 8. And I didn't realize this was Dominion Energy. I need to abstain on this item. Number six is the ordinance to amend city zoning ordinance, CZO Section 2004, regarding eventual and other requirements in the historic Kippsville area overlay district sponsored by Councilmember Volucci.
Okay, we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Yes, Barbara.
I would just like to comment for my reasons for voting no on one and two. Not that these aren't very good, worthy issues. $75,000 to go to the Museum of Contemporary Arts for the Boardwalk Art Show, and $35,000 going for the Coast Defense Study Group to relocate Battleship Barrel to Cape Henry. I'm sure they're both very fine, but we have a process. And I just do not think that it's appropriate for us to allocate funds, tax money, to non-departmental uses out of the budget process and out of the normal process. Normally, the Arts and Humanities Commission would be reviewing applications for grants such as for the Art Boardwalk Art Show and the Community Organizational Grants Appropriation Review Board would be reviewing the historic use. And I just don't think it's quite right that we require some to follow that process and others not to. So I'm voting no.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Worth?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a point of clarification, both of the items that Mrs. Henley just spoke of are coming out of the TIP fund, not the general fund. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, yeah, Michael.
Mr. Mayor, with great respect to Councilmember Henley, I just want to offer an additional clarification. What happened here tonight is no different than the process has been followed many, many times over meetings, and I could cite examples when the TIP fund was used to fund nonprofit organizations that was unanimously accepted by the council. So I don't want anyone to have the impression that something out of order, improper, or out of the ordinary occurred here tonight, or whatever occurred here. So I appreciate the remarks and perspective, and I definitely respect Councilmember Henley's position greatly. But the fact is that this is not out of the ordinary, and I don't want the public to think that it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hey, votes open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you approve the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wilson, noting Ms. Councilmember Henley's nay votes and Vice Mayor Wilson's abstention.
Okay, thank you. We will now hear item number five, resolution to approve the school board's entry into the interim agreement raid design work at Princess Anne High School, BF Williams, Bayside 6, and Bayside High School, deferred from September 6th. Okay, do we have any speakers?
Yes, we had two speakers sign up. Barbara Massner was the first speaker. However, I don't see her here. So the next speaker is Philip Hines.
Good evening.
This will be a short meeting for you guys, so I'll make it quick. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm a parent of three with one currently in Virginia Beach schools. First off, I'd like to say I really do appreciate your forward momentum on pushing this, you know, matter through, things need to get done. However, I'd encourage you to consider a few things when doing the design, if that does get passed tonight. First, you know, consider if you can create some savings, maybe to repurpose some funds to hire teachers or higher salaries for teachers and staff. Let's continue to focus on attracting and retaining the best educators in Hampton Roads. Part of that includes quality facilities, and I get that. Secondly, with regard to the school buildout, I'd encourage you to really keep top of mind how best we can design a school that's safe for the future. School safety is on top of many parents' minds. So if that means paring back the bills to maybe reallocate funds, I think that might be a good thing to keep in mind. Lastly, it's my understanding that this was an unsolicited bid from a reputable company. There are certainly pros and cons to public-private partnerships, but if possible, it would seem appropriate to see if we can't seek multiple bids for a project south of $1 billion. As noted by several council members, the school system is a major draw for people moving to Virginia Beach and staying in Virginia Beach. So let's keep it that way, but see if we can't do that in a responsible manner. Thank you.
Hey, thanks a bunch for coming out tonight.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion in a second? Then we'll have discussion. Rosemary?
We have an alternative version that was put forth by myself and Councilmember Shulman, and I'm gonna ask him in just a moment if he'll read the changes so the public will know, since this was not given out to the public in advance. It's very similar to version two that was in our agenda. And what version two wanted to do, there were three things that, changes that we wanted to encourage with the school board. One is it, because this is really moving forward, especially Bayside High School, much faster than before, and the affordability of being able to get this done in that timely fashion, because it's truly a lot of money. And we want to make sure when they work with the stakeholders that they need to know, let the stakeholders know that this may or may not be financially feasible at this time, even though we're starting this process. And secondly, to follow the process of the revenue sharing formula that we have with the schools, because it's, we're not sure how much it's all gonna cost, but it may be much more than what the revenue sharing formula can bear. And then thirdly, to make sure that they put a lot of thought into the cost scalability of the buildings, so there's not just one design that just take it or leave it. That, we don't want a square box, but maybe we don't need something incredibly elaborate. Maybe there could be something in between. And I know that there's been a lot of delays on this, but I think it's really important to know that this is a very big-ticket item. And if you look at the scope and the realm of things, it's very close to the bond referendum that we went to the voters for last year. And I know that it's, right now, it's only a $15 million design project, but it could blossom into that. So we had a lot of new members, the school board had a lot of new members. And so it was really important to put a lot of thought and to make sure that we were, you know, that we were on the right path and we were also, you know, we want to make sure that these schools get built, but we also have to be very cognizant of the taxpayers and their ability to pay. And so there was just a lot of work to be done. I really want to give a big shout out to Councilmember Taylor.
I really want to give a big shout out to Councilmember Taylor for all his work that he helped with the school modernization committee, and then also to Councilmember Shuler, who helped with the wordsmithing of this third version, and I'm going to ask him to read it as well, at least, not the whole thing, we don't need to read the whole thing, but at least the changes that were made so that the public will do that. And then also to the members of council who were willing to listen to compromise and for all of us work together, and to the members of the school board, because the school board is fine with this as well. So when you can talk about 22 elected officials getting together to agree on something, that can be kind of a big deal, I think. So anyway, I just wanted to make those comments, and I want to move to approve the alternative version.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, do we have any other discussion? Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, and to Councilman Taylor, and honestly, to the rest of my council colleagues who we worked over the weekend. You know, really, just, it's a good example of not just this body working together, but the council and school board, and to Councilwoman Rouse, who is not here, I just want to let everybody know that we did consult with her, and she was, she's also supportive of this. So I'll go ahead and read the changed paragraphs for the resolution. It is in the first resolved, Section A, VB CPS will work with SB Ballard Construction Company to design functional school facilities that include options that find efficiencies of size and scale prior to or during the design process, community input process. And then in the second resolved, there were two changes in paragraph A, VB CPS will provide the city council with updated design and construction cost estimates for the three facilities, including scalable options. And in subsection B, VB CPS will present to the city council and the public a financing plan that is sustainable and affordable for the school board to support and consistent with the city-school revenue sharing formula, including use of the process outlined in the revenue sharing formula should additional revenues be required for such plan. As a capital project, the use of one-time funding, such as reversion funds, should be included in this consideration. Those were the changes. And one last thank you to our city attorney, Dana Hermeyer, for working with us over the weekend on this.
Okay, thank you. You know, Ms. Taylor, do you have anything you'd like to add, and we really, truly appreciate your efforts on this.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson. I'm just thankful that we have found a way to move forward. It was a lively discussion. As a parent of a kindergartner, I understand the value of the resources we provide, the schools, the teachers. Ultimately, I'm going to support this tonight from a community standpoint. There are still some questions, but we have an obligation to support our educators. And I want to commend the school board for their ability to be flexible, as five new members came on board, and for Councilman Shulman for using those litigating skills, negotiation skills, to bring us over the goal line. Thank you.
Thank you. Worth?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to commend everyone for coming to agreement on this, especially the school board as well. This is a big step for our city and to enter this interim agreement, and just remind everyone that this is 30%. The $15 million is to proceed with 30% of the design drawings. And so to me, I looked into this over the weekend and spoke with principals of SB Ballard Construction Company. The beauty of PPEA is that it allows us to engage a general contractor who then can help us devise the right system, cut costs, design the right things to meet the needs of our students and our community, at the same time, keep an eye on costs. And so this is just 30% of the way. We're not committing to anything necessarily tonight for the full cost of schools, but this process also allows the general contractor to utilize the SWAM program, which they have in place, and with goals to promote that part of it. So it's a long-term process, it's a lot of dollars, but I think this is the right move. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, the vote is open.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you've approved the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. And at this point, do we have some appointments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to temporarily suspend City Code 2-3 for this motion only, and I'll speak to it at the appropriate time.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the reason for this motion is it has a little bit of urgency to it, and it's training for the conditional appointees to the Independent Citizen Review Board has already begun. In order to make two replacement appointments to the board as quickly as possible so as to allow the two new appointees to join the others in the remaining training sessions, that's why I moved that we temporarily suspend for this motion only, City Code 2-3A, and that we appoint the following two citizens to the ICRB for three-year terms, conditioned on their successful completion of the required training. And the names are Paulette Diaz-Reed and Thomas Lewis.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we need a second?
Sorry, second.
It was already seconded. Okay, go ahead and vote on it.
Yes, the vote's open.
The motion is stipulated by, you know, Mr. Holcomb.
Vice Mayor Wilson, may I have your vote, please? Thank you. By a vote of 10 to 0, you've approved the appointment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, is there any unfinished business? New business? Okay, we're adjourned and ready for open mic.